Good evening, and welcome to the March 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have all of you that are with us tonight. We've got a good crowd. We're glad to see you. We're proud to have those that are watching at home. But at this time, we're going to ask you to please stand as Piper Sutherland, a kindergarten student at Mitchell-Nelson Primary, and Zion Bell, a sixth grade student at Scales Elementary, will lead us in our pledge followed by a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'm on a silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the printed agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any comment or question? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Communications.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, lots of communications and lots of guests, which is really nice. First of all, I want to start out by saying congratulations to the choir and the band teachers and the music teachers. If you were at the performance last night, it was absolutely amazing. The kids coming together in one voice was, it was just, it was wonderful. So, congratulations to all of them and to the music. I saw a couple of music band teachers with us bringing them all together. It takes a lot of planning, a lot of work on their behalf, and I have to say it was well worth it. If you want to see great pictures from last night, they're on our Facebook account. Also, Steam in the City is Thursday night. So, day after tomorrow, Steam in the City begins, it will be at the Lane Aggris Center beginning at 5:00. I know some of you are judges, some of you are a few partners of ours working together. It's going to be a great event again. Last year, we had well over, I was going to say 1,000 people. I expect we'll probably have that again this year. So, but the Lane Aggris Center will be divided into two sites. We'll have competition on one, and then the STEM showcase on the other. There'll be robotics there as well. On Tuesday, March 21st, Murfreesboro City Schools will host our community and partner stakeholder meeting beginning at 7:45. That's at the central office. This is an opportunity to keep our community informed, to get their feedback, just to really know what's going on in our community and what they're expecting from the schools. So, anyone is welcome to attend that. Again, that's Tuesday, March 21st at 7:45 a.m. Now, I have a whole list of gifted graduates. Again, I know several of you were able to attend that. Always so pleased to talk about our gifted graduates, and we have over 200 teachers who have gone through this program. The Gifted Academy is sponsored by the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation, MTSU, and Murfreesboro City Schools. But these folks deserve their name read out, so I'm going to go through the list, so bear with me, okay? So, the graduates for the 2022-23 Gifted Academy cohort include Kaitlin Anderson, Kristy Argo, Shelby Bramlett, Raven Brooks, Deborah Collier, Landon Cable, Emily Cohn, Hannah Laura Dickerson, Kendall Dossett, Taylor Draper, Brittany England, Gillian Fuller, can't say what my glasses, Deborah Gadian Kazir, Kendah Lloyd, Kristen McCollins, did I skip, sorry, Kendah Gatewood, sorry about that, Francisco Graffio, Brianna Cucker, Shannon Lanell, Michelle Lloyd, Kristen McCollins, Danielle McCreary, Jaclyn Milligan, Kimberly Penrose, Isamari Pozo, Neil Simpson, Rebecca Tate, and Janaye Todd. Those were our Murfreesboro City School graduates. We did have some other graduates from other school districts that attended this MCS cohort. We were happy to have them, but we're so proud of our Gifted Academy graduates. Now, I am going to take time, because this is the reason that everybody is here, to ask Ms. Tamara Cosby and Ms. Angela Pope to join me at the podium, and they're going to talk about Invention Convention because they're the ones who really worked hard at it.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Come on around here. Come on, don't be scared. I told them they all had to give a speech tonight, so now they're all nervous coming up here. They didn't know, I was kidding.
Thank you, Lisa, for telling us.
All right. I'm happy to tell you about these Invention Convention winners. We had some awesome inventions this year, and so these guys won an award. So, I'm going to start with Madeline Adcock. Step on up, Madeline. Madeline won a judge's favorite ribbon for her, she entered the entrepreneurship category, and won for her business called Purple Star Beauty. Next up, we have Leila, Izzy, and Lincoln. Come on up. They won a judge's favorite ribbon for their game Math Blitz. Sydney and Ava, come on up. They won a first place trophy for their game Doughnut Dash, which is a math game. All right, next up, Emerson. Emerson had a team with her, but the rest of her teammates couldn't be here tonight, so she had Emmy Loy and Adeline Piercy as well. They won a first place trophy for their game ABC Sign, and they also won a very special award, a Ben Franklin Award, that came with $100. And there was only two of those given out in the whole convention, so that's a pretty big deal, so. Next up, Lane and Berkeley. They won a second place trophy for their invention called Measuring Scissors. And next up, we have John Mark and PJ, and they also have a teammate Hayes who couldn't be here, and they won a group champion medal for their invention called Cordle. And that just means they were, they did an overall awesome job as a group. Like, they interacted well, they could speak, answer questions, so it was just kind of overall presentation award, so.
All right, Discovery is having their steam walk tonight, so I am representing your sharing Adam Baluls. He won an award for making life, sixth grade making life easier as a push and paddle, and I did get to see that, and it was incredibly cool, so. And I have, right now, this is my, these are my first place trophy winners. They have the opportunity to go to Nationals. This is Zoe Honey and Yadi San, and they won for their cotton candy math game.
This is Alice Simmons, and she won judge's favorite for her animals board game. And this is Maddie McCardle, and she won for best presentation for her Exploring the Continent board game.
So, as you look around the crowd, there's a lot of teachers here, staff members, so I just, can I get them to stand up? Because they are what makes all of this work together. So, guys, if y'all were at Invention Convention or touched Invention Convention, if you will stand up, if you're a staff member, please. I know I do.
Come on. Don't be shy. There you go.
That's what makes it all work. I will tell you that we are having Invention Convention Two at John Pitterd next week. For those who weren't able to compete, if you remember, Invention Convention happened the day of the strong, strong wind gust, and we did not have school that day. So, for all those other ones, if you want to come out to John Pitterd next Friday, you can see all of their great successes as well. I want to take really a quick opportunity to let Dr. Duke come down and ask Dr. Shields to join me, or I'm going to get both of you to come up. I'm giving it to Mitchell Nielsen.
All right. At Mitchell Nielsen, we're uber excited to announce that Barrett Phelps is our national. He's going to the Nationals for Invention Convention. And his, his invention was socks for the sick, and he won best overall for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Entrepreneurship was the category, so we're excited.
We are so proud of Barrett, and you want to tell them what inspired you to make your invention?
My grandpa, he had cancer, and all his friends sent him socks, which made him feel a lot better, so I made an entrepreneurship that does that for other people.
So, we are so proud of Barrett, and to be going to win that best overall and be representing us at Nationals. So, we are going to say to Barrett, thank you for representing the best of MCS. We're very proud of you. Let's get a quick picture right here, all right? Get a quick picture right here.
While you sit down. Did y'all have any questions for any of these groups?
Where?
Yes, ma'am, I knew it was coming.
I just have a comment to all the inventors. I'm very impressed. It looks, that's awesome, and also Happy Pie Day.
Happy Pie Day.
Where is the national convention?
Michigan?
Airborne Michigan.
Michigan, yes.
We're, we're very proud of our team and all of our teachers who work after school to do these clubs for our students and give our students these opportunities. And once again, MCS shines when they go to these competitions.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. I'm going to let them, two more minutes and you get to all leave, okay?
Thank you very much. Very impressive and very nice and very well-deserving, I'm sure. And like Dr. Duke said, we are all very, very proud of not only the teachers, but also all the students that became involved in it, because I'm sure it was a lot of hard work to do and long times doing it. Thank you again very much. All right. Robotics team, Dr. Duke?
Yes, this year, we have been so excited for several of our schools to be able to restart their robotics teams after several years off due to the pandemic. So, I'm going to ask, we've had a lot of success with that as well, so in the spirit of tonight, I'm going to ask Ms. Leah Bartsch to the podium to tell us a little bit about the robotics program this year. Introduce the coaches and one team in specifically.
Yes, good evening, and if the coaches-
Good evening.
Go ahead and join me up here. So, we had an interest meeting to see which schools would brave this journey with us, and we had seven schools say yes. So, this is, this is the crew. They're amazing, hardworking, and brave souls. So, we took seven schools, and each school had two teams, and we worked, didn't know what we were doing, but now we do, and we're ready for next year. And we went to a competition in February, and we actually had a team qualified for state competition, and we'll have more about that. But I'd like to introduce them. So, some were here and some were not able to be here. But at Black Fox, we have Jamie Helta and Kelsey Graves. Case in Lane was Ty Wallace and Chelsea Presley. Discovery School, Kaitlin Campbell and Landon Cable. Nope, that's not right. Michelle Lloyd. Irma Siegel, we had Corey Farrelan and Gretchen Campbell. Hobgood, Kim Neal, Kelsey Roan. Overall Creek, Christopher Penrose and Caleb Jones. Oh, you got, okay, good. They're telling you who they are. And at Salem, we had Kimberly Kel and Landon Cable. And then, so I've asked Kim Neal to share just a little bit. She told a story, and I got tears in my eyes. I thought, you got to share that. And then after that, I'm going to ask Kimberly Kel to come up and introduce her team that qualified for state.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about robotics. It's a subject I'm passionate about. When Leah told us to, told us that robotics was going to be a leap of faith, I smiled, because I've leaped with Leah before, and it's always been a praiseworthy adventure. Ms. Roan and I leaped with both feet into this adventure with full faith, knowing that it was going to be a life-changing experience, not only for us, but for our team. We could leap without fear, because we had Ms. Bell and Ms. McIntyre. They gave us their full support, and at every turn, they gave us their encouragement. As we co-coached this team, we quickly realized how momentous this decision was to coach this team. We opened our team up to fifth and sixth graders only, and we had 100 students that asked to be in it, and we had 10 slots. So, we ended up with 10 eager fifth and sixth graders. We, like every team, had to persevere through the struggles. We had tears, but we had so many more successes. Our team quickly became so much more than about building robots. What robotics facilitated was a perfect environment for our team to learn 21st century skills in a spontaneous series of events. We had a strong, we had strong leaders who learned how to listen, to hear, and not just respond. They learned how to co-lead, how to look for another's talents, and not just think about their own. We had many talks about how to lead when someone is just as strong a leader as you. Leadership is not being bossy, but working shoulder to shoulder with another and bringing out the best in those around you. Team members found their voices through robotics. I have the distinct privilege of teaching these students on a daily basis, and they have taken these skills and brought them into the classroom. I now have witnessed students saying, I know the answer, but I want to hear from this student. They are speaking up, and they have lost their fear of being wrong. They are volunteering to teach others. They have found their confidence in robotics, but they have translated that confidence into the classroom. I believe the most valuable skill that our team has learned from robotics is independence and responsibility. Robotics competitions are student-centered. The coaches are not allowed anywhere near the competition zones. This forced our teams to rely on each other and themselves. The most beautiful thing that came from this was when we returned from the competitions, our team asked to sit in the hallway and plan for Steam in the City on their own. They took ownership of their team. They sat in the hallway, and I listened as they took turns listening to every team member planning their competition. They problem-solved every question, and they, that was brought up, and they had many. They came to Ms. Roan and I with a plan that they had set. As a sixth grade teacher, this makes me proud, as I know they are, we're sending these children off to middle school in a few months, and these skills are imperative for their success, not only in middle school, but in life. If you ask our team, they will tell you they didn't win the competition. However, what I know is, they won through this experience, because it was so much more than about building robots.
Unless you have questions, I mean-
Yeah, I got a question. I'm old school now, okay? And for myself, and maybe for a lot of other people that are watching from home, what does a robotics team do? You build, but what are you building?
Well, sir, with our robotics teams, what we are doing is we are giving them opportunities to problem-solve, create, build. We do have a task in mind or a challenge in mind. There are games that are set up from a program that we use, and these challenges are, every year they change, and every year, the robots they build have to meet a certain challenge. For example, this year's challenge was to design a robot that could take these discs from these dispensers, drop them on the playing field, and then shoot them into a scoring zone. Sounds simple and fun, right? Except, except each of these different towers, you have to release a disc in different ways. So, our students had to be creative and problem-solvent. How can they maximize as many discs as possible to get as many points as possible? So, seeing these young people with a set of plastic and metal parts, look at a design that was 194 pages in length for the basic robot, then change that, was pretty incredible to see, because they were going from nothing, creating something quite competitive and creative. And to see what these young people have done is truly mind, mind-boggling. It's amazing to see. So, in May, we'll find out a new challenge, and we'll start fresh in August, so.
That is awesome.
Thank you. I'm sure there are other people thanking too.
Our Best of MCS, we're going to conjoin this, and as Ms. Neal stated, or I'm sorry, as Ms. Bartsch stated, we did have one of our teams in this first year back, not just do great at the competition, but actually qualify for the state competition. And so with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Kimberly Kel to come up and ask her Salem team to join her at the podium.
All right. So, I just want to introduce the members that are here. We have Tinsley Irvin, Maxville, Cora Lee, and Max Kavanaugh. We also had Jada and Lyman and a student, Janaya Stefferson. So, this team, we actually had two teams in the competition, but this team received the Excellence Award at our competition, our first competition in February. The Excellence Award is just an overall award based on just the program and also their interview. They called, got called back for a second interview, and so this Excellence Award allowed them to have a spot at the state competition, which was March 4th in Collierville, Tennessee. And I am really, really proud of this team. It was not an easy task, and I think there were so many life lessons learned through all of this, so I'm super proud of them. Way to go, guys.
With that, I am proud to give our second Best of MCS award tonight to another group of students, which is our Salem's Robotics Team.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very, very informative, and I've learned something. Yes, sir.
If it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank all of our students for coming tonight, but let them know they are welcome to stay, but the fun stuff is probably coming.
I don't know, they may think it.
I am telling you, that teamwork will serve them well.
Yes, it will, for a long-
And listening to each other, oh my goodness. Key issues, key- That will serve them well. Is it something we said?
Yes, it was.
Our Spotlight on Education, Dr. Duke?
Miss Arnett's going to take this for us.
All right, thank you, ma'am, Ms. Arnett.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, just a little fun fact for you. For more than 30 years, March has officially been designated as Music in Our Schools Month by the National Association for Music Education. This is the time of year music education becomes a focus on all schools across the nation. As you know, MCS throughout the years has been recognized for outstanding music programs, from just a couple of weeks ago, when Bradley Academy presented the Music Man, to last night's District Wide Chorus Festival. I would say Music in Schools Month is off to a great start. So, for tonight's Spotlight on Education, we wanted to take a moment to share with you just a glimpse of what you might be seeing in our schools, not just this month, but all months. And so, who better to do that than two of our music teachers? So, we'll ask them to come up. Tony Hartman, who's all things music at Scales Elementary, and then Luke Hill, who's all things music and some steam at John Pitterd. So, they're going to share with you for just a little bit about music.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's Music in Our Schools Month, and we're here to celebrate a little bit of, a few of the things that are going on in our schools with our music teachers and students that get to enjoy that experience. We're honored to be asked to come and share just a few things about what's happening in, in our music classrooms as well as across the district. Music is a powerful medium for educating the whole child. Music education for the students of Murfreesboro helps us fulfill our mission, as well as our district goal for all to be known, safe, challenged, and empowered. We wanted to give you just a few examples of how this is actively happening around our district. Like has been said, last night, 280 of our students from all around Murfreesboro City got to participate in the MCS Music Festival. Our students participated in high-quality music experience with an audience of close to 800 stakeholders present. It was a phenomenal night of music and an opportunity to continue to build upon what MCS does for the community as well. May 11th will be our MCS Honor Band Event at MTSU. This has been spearheaded by one of our band directors, Kathy Waldecker. The goal is to reward our advanced musicians with an opportunity to perform alongside their district peers. This experience will no doubt further their passion for music and excellence. Tony?
Also in May, Steel de Borough, our district steel pan group, which is based at Scales and John Pitterd, will be going on a four-school tour. They will be visiting Discovery School, Case in Lane Academy, Bradley Academy, as well as Siegel, to share. This is a great opportunity to provide our district with homegrown music entertainment that it touches on community as well as cultural awareness. This tour will no doubt have a positive impact, not only on the students performing, but also the students who will be in the audience. We hope to see more opportunities like this filter throughout Murfreesboro City Schools in the coming years. And the cross-curricular advantage of music in Murfreesboro City Schools, our teachers are working to serve our district's academic goals by integrating other subjects into their curriculum. This photo we're putting up is from Black Fox Elementary Music Specialist, Amy Swanson and Dennis Van Dyke. And what you're seeing here is a literacy activity with rhythm, which directly impacts language literacy as well. Reeves Rogers Specialist, Jennifer Burton, has recently shared with our Music PLC ideas on how to integrate books and rhythm concepts, again, positively impacting the literacy rates in our district. Another photo from Scales Music Room, where fifth graders recently performed a concert based on fifth-grade science standards, with the aim to equip students with musical tools to recall during their state testing later this year.
And what you hear, see now on the screen, is the recording booth at John Pitterd. Through the generosity of two grants, it took two of them, but I'm thankful for both of them, from Richard Siegel Foundation and the City Schools Foundation, John Pitterd was able to acquire a professional recording booth, which gets to be in my classroom. Kids get to see it every day. The students, it's, it's really exciting, what they've done so far, and I'm excited to share the, some finished product. They're doing sound engineering projects using music technology, writing songs, recording instruments, performing instruments in John Pitterd in the Steam Music Lab, and our album is to be released in May, so, and it's free. We'll let you know when that drops. One of the big takeaways we want for this evening is music advocacy. Students need music.
Yep.
It's not just that it's fun, although it is. It provides legitimate research-based advantages for MCS students, and this is not just limited to these amazing, wonderful special events or large ensembles that we've talked about also. This is music education on a regular basis, and it's worthy of our support, because it does truly impact the whole child in one unique experience. Studies show that music instruction accelerates brain development in younger children, particularly in the areas of the brain that are responsible for processing sound, language development, speech perception, reading skills. It's according to some neuroscientists at USC. In addition to that, being part of a well-structured music program in our schools helps our children build their social skills. It can help shape self-confidence. It can give a sense of self-accomplishment. It fosters teamwork and provides children a safe place to make mistakes and then to grow from those mistakes. Students who study music are more emotionally developed with empathy toward other cultures, and they also tend to have a higher self-esteem and are better at coping-
and they also tend to have a higher self-esteem and are better at coping with anxiety. Regular music instruction develops spatial intelligence, which is fundamental for math tasks. And learning music promotes craftsmanship. We don't just do the work and turn it in. We do the work and then we make the work better, and then we figure out how to make better and move beyond that. Students want to create good work instead of just mediocre work, and this desire then is applied to all of their areas of study. And what you're looking at on this slide right here is a reasonable paraphrase of our district's academic goals, both educationally and socially emotionally. And the MCS Music Team, we're all in it for those kids and we're here to support that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just had a little. So simply put, our district will continue to grow and change in the future. That's exciting. Let's make sure music is a part of that for those students as we also grow and change together. Continued music education in our budget is crucial to help our students feel known, safe, challenged, and empowered. Music touches the hearts and minds of our students in a way that no other content can. Please keep music in your mind and heart financially as a board to give our students and our community the best academic experience here in Murfreesboro. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What a sound engineering program were they using in that photograph?
GarageBand.
It was GarageBand. I thought I recognized it. I think it's incredible that we're not only doing everything that this wonderful presentation says we're doing, but we're doing it in such a way that can be replicated in home and for years to come. Guys, this was, this was something special and incredible. Thank you very much for that presentation. And thank you very much for instilling within these young people the passion for life that is music. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I can't imagine the effort that goes into this, the coordination to pull together 280 students that you have, across the district, have coordinated into this one night of music. If you could give me like a short, maybe two-minute synopsis of how you pull that together, when it starts and I, I mean, because you're communicating with all the music teachers, the curriculum in every school, or the, and boiling that down, it's, it's amazing how you do that.
It is quite the collaboration, and we began planning quite early. There's several other music teachers who are not present here who equally deserve the shine, from making sure we have paper plates for every child for dinner, to selecting the music and who's going to conduct, who's going to accompany. But yes, you can very well imagine, it is a team effort, and we would be remiss not to recognize, you know, all those teachers who, again, should be here to be recognized as well. And we are just thankful to have these opportunities for those kids. It's an event they're never going to forget, you know?
Yeah, what we got to see last night was those music teachers, choral teachers, who poured in hours and hours of their passion, and you could just see it reflected. And it, those other music teachers who led those, run those rehearsals, all that, they're, they're worthy of all that, all praise for that.
Some well before school, some staying long after school, some fitting it in the nooks and crannies of their day. And so you're right, it, it's a lot to put together, and we're thankful to be able to do it.
PLC is important for that.
Indeed, it is. Indeed, it is.
Mr. Suddles, you have a comment? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Wes.
I was just going to say, thank you so much for that. And then every one of those children are going to remember this, that night.
I'm just impressed that there's sound engineering included. That is so impressive to me. Do we work along with MTSU's Sound Engineering Department as well? I mean, do they come over and?
That's on the sketchbook of notes.
Okay.
To add as we grow, for sure.
Just wondering.
We just got the booth at John Pittard in November. It was purchased and assembled and put together, and then in November, we started the project. And I'm excited to see what other community resources we'll be able to bring in. This year, we're first just trying to write some songs together. We're writing songs about S-T-E-A and M.
Okay.
As well as the four Cs, and then some other songs that some of the sixth graders are writing about what sixth grade was like at John Pittard, a little more free, creative style for them and.
Because Barbara and I were going to volunteer, we were going to volunteer to come by and do a duet in that sound booth. Do you play guitar?
I'll play anything you want me to play.
Okay, so yeah. It may be a tight fit.
I think Mr. Richardson might need to write a theme song for the Board.
We'll do a rap song.
We'll do a rap. Come on down.
I mean, it's a lot different than the, the music department when I was in that age. So I'm just, I mean, hats off. Excellent. Thank you.
Amazing stuff.
Absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thanks to all the music teachers.
Yes.
Everybody that had input any way or form of fact. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Whoa, whoa, what a great, we can just end right now on a positive note.
We thought we'd have a lot of fun with some kids and music teachers.
All right. Board members, we have a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Action items. Approval of resolution for acquisition of potential pre-K property.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board. During our last board meeting, I discussed a potential project of opportunity between the city of Murfreesboro Administration and the city schools. The city is looking to use city-held grant funds and other available city funds to purchase an existing building that could be used for additional pre-K space on the west side of town. The city is able to utilize these funds for the purchase of the building as well as certain HVAC and plumbing-related upgrades. The intent is that once the building has been purchased and agreed upon, upgrades are completed, MCS would take over operation of this building. By adding this space, we would be able to ensure we can continue to offer our existing pre-K classes while also addressing the need for additional classroom space for new special education programs and growth positions. Currently, we have 23 pre-K classes in our schools throughout the district. That is a combination of our voluntary pre-K and our integrated pre-K. All but two of these are located in the north and east part of the city. This opportunity would allow us to increase the number of pre-K spots available to families specifically on the west side of town without having to travel across town. Although this space would not include adding additional pre-K classes, it will free up much-needed space in rooms across the district. We are seeking approval tonight of the attached resolution and to work with city administration on the acquisition of the property of this pre-K space. The resolution outlines the, that upon purchase, as we spoke upon, the city of Murfreesboro and the completed COVID-related upgrades, the city school board will be responsible for the upkeep and running of the preschool programs operating within the building and the annual costs that will come from our Murfreesboro City Schools' operating budget. The resolution also acknowledges that because the requested transfer of assets would be a one-time appropriation, it would not increase or otherwise impact the city's maintenance of effort obligation under state law. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have a few representatives from the city as well if you have questions for them, but we are recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Members of the Board, you have seen the resolution. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, any question or comment?
I'm just so grateful to the city and their leadership and partnership with us. I really can't say how, how much that means to us as a board and to me personally. I think it's an incredible partnership that we, that we foster often under this administration and with the Board's leadership. So thank you all very, very much.
Well said. I see no, any question or comments, or all in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. We have approved the resolution. All right. Approval of Board Policy 5.302, sick and bereavement leave.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm going to handle this policy tonight, just because procedurally, it's a little different. There'll be two motions on this policy. The deferred motion from last meeting and the motion to accept the language as presented on second reading. If you recall, at the last meeting, a motion was made and properly seconded to add language to this policy, allowing employees to take a sick day in observance of a religious holiday or a federal holiday not included on the MCS calendar. That motion failed, however, all members were not present, and Board Policy 1.405 states that if all seven members are not present and the Board is unable to approve a motion for an action item, it's deferred to the next meeting. So the motion deferred from last meeting is to amend the language of this policy to add language that an employee may take a day of sick leave for a religious holiday or federally-recognized holiday not on the MCS calendar with five days' notice. So that is the first motion on the floor for this policy.
All right.
Mr. Chair, that was, that was my motion, so I'd like to ask permission to withdraw that motion. I don't think it's relevant anymore, given the other votes that we took at the last meeting.
Okay.
So in order for, for her motion to withdraw, you just need to ask if any board member objects, and if none objects, it's deemed withdrawn.
You've heard the question. Anybody object?
Without objection.
Without objection? Okay, we're good.
So that disposes of that motion. Now, the second motion that would be required on this would be to approve the policy as presented on second reading with the amendments that were discussed and recommended by the Board last meeting.
I move that we accept that. Policy with the amendments from last meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, any question or comment?
I've got one because I'm not sure. I'm lost now completely. This records me as voting yes. What did I vote yes on? Because I remember voting no. Was that on that prior one that?
The motion that you voted no on was the one that Ms. Moore withdrew.
Okay.
Now, this would be to accept the policy with the language that's as presented in your board packet.
Okay.
But a motion has been made and duly seconded. Any other question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Motion passes. Approval of Policy 5.30310, vacations and holidays?
Yes, sir. This policy outlines paid holidays and vacations that employees receive. Because of the motion that the Board just approved to increase, to expand the definition of sick leave for those religious holidays, we have added that to Policy 5.301, so those policies are in agreement with each other, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy six, I'm sorry, wait a minute. 6.200, attendance.
Policy 6.200 outlines the district's attendance policies and progressive truancy intervention. This amendment changes the language of the policy to align with our current truancy intervention practices. Specifically, it addresses the district's new truancy diversion board, which we implemented this year, and we are recommending approval of the policy as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Now, any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of SMC order form?
Yes, sir. Murfreesboro City Schools participates in the E-Rate, or what's otherwise referred to as the Education Rate, federal program, to purchase technology equipment needed to ensure our schools obtain high-speed, affordable internet access. The E-Rate program provides substantial discounts to districts based on the percentage of eligible students for free and reduced lunch. The district conducted a mini-bid per E-Rate guidelines for category E-Rate, two E-Rate services for new cabling and switches at Mitchell Nielsen Primary, Reeves Rogers, and Northfield. E-Rate services apply 80% of the funding needed for these technology upgrades. The district awarded the mini-bid switches to Wrightcorps and the mini-bid for cabling to Central Technologies. The contract to the vendor was chosen based on the required evaluations. The Tennessee Educational Broadband Consortium requires that the state master contract order form be completed and approved by the school board prior to us requesting the E-Rate funding. Vendors are all aware that the final award is based on the E-Rate funding approval. The technology budget does include the 20% the district is responsible for in our current budget. We are recommending approval of the state master contract and the awarded vendor for these services, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion to approve the order form.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, any question or comment, Mr. Suddles?
I have a question. You somewhat answered it. The, this E-Rate, we end up paying 20%. And this is a federally-funded program, correct?
That is correct. I'm going to defer to Ms. April Zavisa to help answer these questions as well.
She's one of my favorite people.
I think he just wanted Ms. Avisa to come up here.
I like to talk to her a lot. I break my computer on purpose. This is a federal program for which, if we did not receive federal funding, we would be responsible for 100% of this rate. We get an E-Rate, which is an education rate. This is federal monies, right?
Correct.
So this is, this comes from the federal government. So if we did not receive federal monies, our school system would be responsible for not 20%, but 100% of this, which I'm guessing is going to be in, because I, just in dummy terms, a lot of money, right?
Exactly. We're actually awarded in five-year cycles.
Five-year cycles.
Our five-year cycle, we have 1.5 million to spend in that five-year cycle. We're on year three, so we have three years left. We did not do category two for the first two years for other projects that we were doing. So we're responsible for 300,000, which I have budgeted in this year and the coming years for us to cover the projects.
So just to ballpark it, it would go from 300,000 to way more than that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I'm only asking.
1.5.
1.5?
Yeah.
Okay, so we get 1.5 over that five-year span.
Correct.
And we'd have to find that money elsewhere, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. All right. E-S-S-E-R Planning Agenda Addendum?
Yes, sir. The Tennessee Department of Education requires that local school districts update our ESAR 3.0 public plan every six months through September 30th, 2023. Each time, we seek public input on the plan and revisions and consider this such input. Stakeholder input has been gathered through parent and student surveys, as well as community stakeholder meetings during the months of August through February. Stakeholder input did not warrant any changes to our prior approval spending plan. So therefore, there have been no revisions currently to our ESAR 3.0 spending plan since the Board's previous approval, but we are seeking approval of this six-month addenda per state requirements. I also want to say, although we're not making any immediate changes, we do very much anticipating, anticipate adjusting ESAR 3.0 as we go through the budget process because next year is the final year of this federal grant that we'll have. So we'll be doing some final adjustments to make sure we totally liquidate all of those funds based on what we planned previously. But for tonight, we are recommending of the current plan as, as required by the state with no changes since the last board approval.
Now, a motion to approve the plan.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. General Purpose Budget Amendment.
Yes, sir. We are requesting the Board to approve the transfer of previously-approved funds within the same major, major budget category. The amendment transfers a total of $14,413 in revenues to new account numbers to align with the Tennessee Department of Education year-end reporting requirements. This amendment transfers a total of $93,600 in expenditures to recognize an increase in audit and legal fees, finance contracts, and staff development for new payroll and purchasing staff, bus parts, and new classroom furniture for '23-'24. All increases are covered from savings and other line items within the same major budget category. There are no new revenues and expenditures to change fund balance, and we are recommending approval of the amendment.
You have heard the recommendations. We have a motion to approve the amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question, comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Reports and information, enrollment?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we have one more approval we need for the finance revenue report.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I skipped it, didn't I? All right. Let's have it. Welcome, Ms. Williams.
We're so glad to see you.
Thank you. It's so good to be here. It's so good to see all of you, wonderful smiling faces. And, and thank you for approving that budget amendment. Our year-to-date financials are, we're continuing to do what we were doing. And thank you, Dr. Duke, for your report on the last meeting on the finances. Very well done. We are continuing to watch, continuing to watch the revenues, especially those local revenues. So again, we are seeing more revenue coming in than expenditures going out. So we are watching the cash. And this is a pivotal time. This is a crucial time because the county property taxes, they're wrapping up. They were due at the end of February. And so we will start seeing our final big dollars come through on our county property taxes. So we continue to look at sales tax, and our sales tax remains pretty steady. We compare it to February of last year, and we compare year-to-date. And that's the trend that we're really watching, is that year-to-date local revenue to make sure that we stay in compliance with our maintenance-of-effort. So we're about month-to-month where, if we compare February this year to February last year, where there's about an 8% increase in our property taxes. But if we look at our total local dollars, we're seeing a little over a 1% increase. So it's where it all lands within those major categories. So we continue to watch it, and we'll have more information to follow. Like I said, March will be the last big property tax, county property tax that we see. On our expenditure side, you know, it's pretty, we're just rocking on. We're, I'm glad to say that our expenditures are consistent with what we have budgeted, and we continue to watch some certain line items. But all in all, we will be bringing a budget amendment before you for the labor side. What you approved tonight, that budget amendment was the non-labor component of moving money within major categories. So we'll bring before you the labor part of that as well. So we're up on the cash side, a little over $6 million, and I really do like to see that. But we're gonna continue to watch that and bring any major shifts and changes before the board for your information as well. And Dr. Duke is watching that as well. So, thank you.
You're always happy to come when you've got a surplus in the profit.
I was a little nervous earlier. But we'll continue to watch it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we do need a motion to approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the report.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Now, we can get to reports. Enrollment.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Draw your attention to the first page on enrollment. In our enrollment for this period, the sixth period of the total of nine periods, the period that ended on March the 2nd, our enrollment was 9,739. So you see, that's a slight dip of about 10 students. We have added that feature on this report now so that you can see on a school-by-school basis where those numbers changed, and you can see it's up and down a little bit at all of our schools. So on the next page of our report, our PTR for the period six, you can see at the bottom of the page that our kindergarten-through-third-grade pupil teacher ratio is 1 to 1, excuse me, 1 to 18.7. And for grades four through six, it's 1 to 20.4. So all those are within the range. And if you notice that each school individually by grade, you can see that those numbers are all within that desired range. Excuse me. For the next report regarding truancy, our numbers went up this time to 349 students for period six who are truant, have missed 10 or more days unexcused absences. And the last report, chronic absenteeism, those missing 10% or more. So at the end of the sixth period, that would be students who have missed 12 days or more, whether they're excused or unexcused. And that number is at 1,464, slightly more than the last period. We normally think that by this time, we're beginning to drop. We have had some sicknesses and illnesses continue, even though COVID and the flu, there's still a lot of stuff going around. We still believe those numbers will drop before the end of the year, so we'll see a lot less than that in the chronic absenteeism. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many more of these reports do you have?
This is, I mentioned that at the beginning, period six, and we have nine periods, so.
You personally have three more of these reports?
Three more.
Or you will never, ever have to do these reports. Is that correct?
That's correct. But I'll watch the board meetings because I want to see.
No, you won't.
We are not looking forward to that, but wow.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your efforts in your report.
Can I ask a quick?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind. On your truancy report, there's a pretty big jump in a couple of schools. Do we, do you have any idea why?
I really don't to say specifically.
There's about a 40-person jump in a couple of schools.
And those are numbers that we watch. But we do have, one thing we want to do is make sure that our attendance clerks are getting excuses in. Because what happens? You can be at five days unexcused, have an extended illness, and come back to school. And within a couple of days, if you don't get those notes in, then you're on this truancy.
That drops you in that category.
So we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that the attendance clerks are working on that. We have a few new attendance clerks, and so, but we work from the office. We have some good support. I have to say, thanks to Dr. Duke. We have additional staff that, over the past couple of years, we've added so that we can watch and coach them and work with them. So I think that could be one issue, and so as we work.
No red flags in your, in your mind?
I tell you, it takes, it takes a few days to get back to these because we have so many things going on. But I always try to get back to these and take a look at these. Those numbers are higher than normal, and so that's something we'll go take a look at.
Thank you.
If I can add, if that's okay, two things. One is, we have seen, and Joe sends me a report just about every week of by day what our attendance looks like. And it's really clear, we can watch over week where we have these spikes in sickness. We mentioned our attendance policy earlier. We made that change, adding the truancy diversion board, which Joe and Ms. Taylor have taken on. And again, that's another step to bring these families in before they have to go to the juvenile court to say, let us help you. And part of that conversation is also, okay, wait a minute, this was a doctor's issue, so let's get these notes turned in. Like, let's get the documentation so we can correct it, we can provide those supports to you, and hopefully get them off this list. I really appreciate Joe showing that truant list, which is unexcused, and the chronic absenteeism, which is just every, every kind of attendance. We have seen that go up. It's something we really continue to watch. It's one of our district goals to lower that. And, but especially during this time of the year, stressing to parents, it's an interesting message of please have your child be at school unless they're sick. And it's sometimes a hard decision to have, to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to the next. Personnel report.
Yes, sir. The board has the personnel report in their packet, and we're happy to address any questions they may have.
Yes, I have a question. I think, and this is one of the smaller reports that I've seen as far as personnel. Anything changing? How did this happen?
Well, I think time of the year as well. Time of the year, and we are, I think, at this point, Mr. Greenstein?
It's been two weeks since the last report.
And it's only been two weeks since the last report, so there you go. But we're definitely, we're definitely, the HR team is working really hard to keep our school staff, to keep them in place, and keep everyone where they need to be.
Good. Well, it looks good.
All right. Directors' update?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any major updates tonight, except I hope you enjoyed tonight the showcase of students we brought to you. I just can't emphasize again how proud I am of our invention convention winners, of our robotics team, of our music teachers. It just goes back to continue to show the excellent, excellent programs that we're offering here and that our students are being recognized, not just in our district, but across the state. So I'm just really proud of all of them, and again, I hope you got to, enjoyed seeing some students tonight. Also, Ms. Arnett sent me some information today, just, you know, we're in the middle of summer school registration. So we had our parent-teacher conferences last week. We have now almost 560 students already registered for summer school. About half of those are third graders, which we expected. So we are well on our way to getting our summer school program up and going very quickly.
All right. Thank you. I will remind the board of two things. Number one, if you plan on attending the budget meeting Monday night, please let Ms. Van Cleve know tonight. And also, if you have interest in attending the Summer Law Institute or Convention in Gatlinburg, let her know that too, because I think the date is next Tuesday. The room reservations can be made, and unless you want to stay at the bottom of the hill, you better get your name in the box. All right. Anything else coming for this board, Mr. Ballard?
I just wanted to raise the attention of the upcoming Excellence in Education Gala.
Oh, yeah.
We had a city foundation meeting today that's all coming together very well, and we're getting good sponsorships. And Lisa and Tori have worked so hard to get this thing going, and it's going in the right direction. So I encourage all of you to enjoy that night if you can do so, because it's a great. You heard the gentleman tonight speak of the city foundation sponsorship for the music booth. And, and there's so many good things coming out of the city foundation. We need to support it, and it goes right to the teachers. So thank you for that.
Very much so. Thank you. Anything else to come before this board tonight?
Today's picture day.
Yes, sir. We're gonna have that done too. So before we do that, we have to have a motion to adjourn. Do I have that?
I'll give you that.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you all in favor. Good night.
Good night.